Next, next we're.
I don't, I don't need more practice. You already have the practice. You're, you're certified.
Yeah, cause we're seven oh two.
Really?
See an agenda in the box.
Only one item.
Mike is with us, not in person.
So Mike's like, we'll leave his name tab out.
I think so. Do you?
Do we know if DJ's coming?
We have a DJ.
DJ coming?
That was funny. I wish.
And Michael is online connecting right now. And the live stream has begun, although we have not started the recording for public record.
We're good.
So whoever's conducting telling you ready and I'll start the public recording.
Good call.
Paper, rocks, scissors?
Oh, I'm not even gonna go in that.
I'll do it. I'll do it. If you'll post it up here. I don't have my.
You want, uh, do you want to get a printed one? So just have.
You've got it. It's up here now.
Put it up. Okay.
All right. I started the recording.
All right. Welcome everybody to the, the planning commission meeting on June fourth. We'll get started now. Sorry for the delay. Had a little technical difficulties. Um, to start off, we will have a thought and pledge of allegiance. Holly, did you know about this?
No, but I don't know what to take it.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll pass to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
All right. You take care of that. Thank you.
My brother in heaven, we come before the beginning of this planning commission meeting for the city of Hyde Park. And we thank thee for the beautiful place that we have. We thank thee for the mountains and the clean water and air and the safety and security that we enjoy and friendliness and of neighbors and friends and service and loving one another. We thank thee for the associate associations that we have and the freedoms that we get to enjoy. We pray that that would be with us as we try to manage the affairs of our city and help with things that would be better, best for all of the citizens in the long run. Help us to be mindful of those here and now and those who will come after us. Uh, please help us to have clear minds and to understand one another and to communicate well and be friendly and kind in all of our discourse. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the proud of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, let's approval of the minutes from the last meeting on May twenty first. Did anybody have anything that they saw that they did not agree with or like from the minutes that were posted? I didn't see anything. Then you didn't see anything either.
So I didn't see anything.
You okay, Holly?
I, I saw something.
All right, Mike. What do you got?
I think on the bottom of page three, you've put down that we opened a um, a public hearing. I think we already showed that earlier in the same document. I think we put it twice for this, for the same subject.
Find that. You know what he's talking about?
He said again, at bottom of page three.
Yes. Yeah, I think the stormwater penalties, we'd already opened that public hearing on page, on the bottom of page two. And then we opened it again on page three. So that wasn't there. That didn't happen then and happened before. That's the only thing I saw. That's deleted. I'm good.
Okay. I'm not seeing that on our draft that we have pulled up here, but I'll check with.
It may just be on the one that I have on my box. I don't know.
I'll make a note. Check with that tomorrow morning and make sure that gets updated.
Was there anything else you saw, Mike?
Nope, that was it. And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with that one amendment.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's have a vote. All those in favor of the approving the minutes from the May twenty first meeting, um, subject to that potential change, the change that Mike came up with, um, that they'll review. All those in favor could say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, sounds like minutes are approved. Um, let's move on to our administrative items. Wolfpack Heights. Final. If, uh, the developer wants to come up and give a presentation on. Oh, Marcus, why don't you give us a little, little, um, intro, kind of overview, intro, whatever you want to call it, and then we'll have them come up.
Yeah, I'll talk about this a little bit. So this plan is new for the planning commission, kind of. Um, Wolfpack Heights is a subdivision located along Wolfpack Way between Wolfpack Way and Highway ninety one. Just to the south of where the Aria is currently being built. North, north of the area. Thank you. Just north of where the Aria project is being currently built. When this plan was presented to the planning commission in preliminary stage, it was only the uh, commercial condo units with residential on top plus some of the townhomes you're seeing on the current plan. Um, the planning commission recommended that it not move forward. And so when this plan was taken to the city council, they updated it to add in more townhome units and a lot more commercial space. The the plan is currently, I mean, as you see here, there's a couple of issues that have been outlined with during the redlining process. I just want to present uh, for the commission that need to be considered tonight bef- before the vote is taken. Um, some of these were just brought up a matter of hours ago. And so I sent that out to the developer. I hope they had a chance to see that. And so they'll have some conversation about it. There's two main concerns that the city has at this point. Uh, concern number one is with the open space. The the developers proposing the large retention pond be counted towards open space requirement. The city staff is not comfortable with that being counted as open space and snow removal area and stormwater retention pond. I feel like there's is a problem with it being counted as all three. I'll let the developer speak to their point of view with that item. Um, the other issue that was identified is the, there's a concern when we were double checking the stormwater calculations, it appears that the pond is undersized. I asked Sunrise to triple check these calculations because this seems odd to me, but they identified that that pond may be undersized. And so they will be looking at that really closely over these next couple of days. Um, but those are the two biggest concerns that the city staff have with this project. Um, when it was moved forward at DRC, the motion was that it not come to the planning commission until the red lines were fully addressed. But these, besides the stormwater, the issue of the open space got to the point where um, eh, the developer sees the code one way, the city staff sees it another way. So we decided to move it on to the planning commission and city council to be the ultimate decision on the issue. So that's where it's at. Inbox is the current site plan as well as the proposed design for the commercial units and the residential units.
And we're just talking about phase one in this today, right?
Technically, yeah, we're talking about they, the phase one construction plans, although overall we still are taking a look at the entire site to make sure that things like the stormwater and open space that affect the entire site are in place. Um, although they could be altered in the future as part of future phases.
All right. The developer now wants to come forward and explain the, their thought process maybe on the open space. And I know you haven't had a chance to probably look at the stormwater and that's something. I mean, you can comment it on it now if you would like, but uh, it's probably if you just barely got it, you need the chance to double check.
Yeah, we, we got some comments on it. So um, so I'm Cody Zoner. I am the engineer on the project. Um, okay. So to start out with just that, uh, the pond being common open space. We are completely willing to disregard the pond as common open space. Cause even if we disregard the pond as common open space, we still meet the fifty percent requirement from the old code. So rather than have a fight over what, whether or not the pond's common open space, since it's not technically needed as common open space, we're totally willing to just say, awesome. It's not common open spaced.
So, so what is the requirement on open space? And when, at the time this was submitted, just as a review for us?
Right. So.
Not fifty percent, fifty percent.
We have to remember that this was submitted under the old code. I have uploaded the old code, the twenty twenty four version into box for us to all be able to refer back to. The requirement for general open space was twenty percent of the entire site. Again, the general open space could double as a stormwater pond, snow removal areas. It just refers to general open space. The old code did require that half of that general open space be set aside as what's referring to as common open space, which does have to be a recreation area or amenity area. I'm trying to find that.
The twenty percent.
Half of the twenty percent.
That's the fifty percent you're talking about.
So ten percent really is.
The open space needs to be the amenities slash gathering areas slash common open space.
And they meet that without the, sorry, they meet that Marcus, they meet that requirement without the pond? The ten percent?
Um, I think it's close without the pond.
Oh, okay.
I have to go back to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find, here it is, open space and landscaping. So here's the old code, page seven of the documented box details the requirement for the code. Twenty percent total, fifty percent shall be dedicated as common open space such as recreation facilities or amenities.
Okay, cause the front by the commercial wouldn't qualify as recreational open space, correct?
That's for the planning commission and the city council ultimately to decide. Like I said, there was a concern with.
Like landscaping.
Yeah. So that could be counted as it has to be an amenity or recreation area. So the developer is currently showing there's a picnic area behind the commercial building. The city staff thought that was you know, technically they're meeting the the letter of the code. Is it a great amenity area? That's for the city, planning commission, city council to decide.
Last time we talked about swapping the play and the pickleball.
Uh, I think that was back when the pickleball was down down, down by the pool.
No.
No, even.
She was at the DRC.
We were just, no, and even before DRC this morning, we talked about like, or.
No, no, you were at last month's DRC where we saw that.
Talks about it?
Yeah.
Okay. Just saying like, can we have the playground on the residential side of the pickleball courts instead of the?
Talking about just switching that.
Just swap those two.
Yeah. Oh yeah, we could do that. Yeah.
Okay. Except that I already asked that and it's still looking like this. So.
Oh yeah, I think you just didn't get the communication cross very good. So yeah, we can do that. We'll be fine.
So. Whoa, Abbott and Costello. So what in, in, when we're looking at this view here, I can see a a, a pool clubhouse area. Is that what this is right here?
Yes.
And so obviously that is common open space.
Yeah.
Where else is, and you're counting the stuff over by the road? Is that what?
Have, you have the pool and the clubhouse area.
Right.
You also have another playground, uh, right there with a green space for kids to play. Um, all of the green space in between the townhomes throughout from north to south counts as common open space. Um, your pickleball court slash playground area counts as common open space. The little green space right there between the two commercial buildings will have a picnic table. That is common open space. And then behind lot, where it says lot one, there'll be a couple more pickleball, uh, not pickleball, picnic tables back there that will also count as common open space.
But where's like a big.
Above the one point, we technically aren't even counting. There's also that green area over there on Wolfpack Way. That would also count as common open space, but I haven't even counted that in the.
Where's like a big soccer field or place to throw frisbee or that's like in the residential area, not like over by the highway.
Um, that playground with the green space right there probably your biggest spot to throw a football, footballer frisbee around. Terms of soccer field, yeah, we don't really have a soccer field. We are completely okay with turning the retention pond into a sodded field and the kids can go play soccer and that.
Still that's.
But that would put it right next to the highway.
Yeah. And that's my same, the same problem with the other space is it's right as a highway. You know, you've got, I'm assuming young families and kids in strollers and toddlers. Like you're saying, go play behind the commercial building?
We don't feel like, um, most of the kids and toddlers will be playing at the playground, the clubhouse pool area, the pickleball slash playground up there. Uh, I have little kids. I, I don't think they're going to go play behind the, um, commercial unless I'm saying, oh, well, there's picnic table over there. Let's go as a family over there and sit on picnic table. So as it's used as a common open space, it meets the requirements of a common open space. Um, I personally see most of the kids, yes, are going to be playing by the playgrounds and the pool.
Does it have to be in the commercial area or can it be in the residential area?
Well, we have quite a few throughout the residential area, including if you see on there, there's a bunch of hatched. In between the townhomes. Yeah, there's those little hatched areas. Those are going to be barbecue pads, um, sitting areas, little workout stations, possibly even another little tot. Cute little tot playground. Um, so we have quite a few in the residential area.
I mean, I like the concept of having a lot of it together, like you have around that commercial building. Does it have to be around that commercial building or can it be in the residential area?
Um, for this plan to fit, it has to be around that commercial. That's just how it lays out on this plan.
I just don't think it's gonna, no one's gonna use it down by the highway. No one's gonna send their kids to the highway to play.
Yeah. And I agree. I don't think it's going to be necessarily kids. I actually think it's going to be more utilized by A, those townhomes that's exists right there along the commercial and more adults or people like that for sitting areas slash picnic area.
But for, I've got a fifteen year old. I'm not even sending my fifteen year old there.
But for it to function as for the development, for open space, it needs to be used by the development. The bulk of this development is not going to go over there to use it. It's, it's, it's not feasible.
If it has to be used by the development, it will be used by the whole development.
It, there's no, you just said you wouldn't have your little kids go over there.
Well, yeah, I, there, I'm sure there's going to be people that tell their kids not to go play at the pickleball court. That doesn't mean the pickleball court does not meet the standards for a, for a commercial or a common open space.
So one comment that the DRC brought up at the meeting was Cody said that all this space between the townhomes is common open space. But the city staff does not feel like that is common open space. That is more like a general open space. The area, like they do have these common open space areas that are crosshatched. That definitely counts because it's an amenity. But this, that's just.
You're paying on somebody's front porch or back porch or whatever.
Yeah, we don't feel like that. That can count as regular general open space, but not as like an amenity or recreation area.
I would agree with that. I don't think this plan has enough open space as what was redlined.
Right. Um, per the code, that's the main problem though, is that the code can't be decided upon just based on what opinions are. It has to be based on verbiage in the code. Per the verbiage in the code, that does count as common open space as a walking trail. Um, slash the kids will play in front yards quite a bit through there.
Well, I, I just, I, I don't, I don't think it meets the intent of open space, common open space.
Well, and, and around the commercial, like there's, there's no interpretation there. Like that is too far away. There's banks of townhouses in front of them. I mean, there's no way you could count that as common open space.
I'm just not going to take my kids out of the neighborhood area, past the McDonald's to go play on their park strip is what that feels like. And maybe it's a lot bigger than that, but it's along the highway. Like, so I love that it's a big chunk. Can it be on, like you said, are you saying it has to be in that commercial area? Can it be on the backside of that commercial area? So at least it borders the townhome side instead of bordering the road? The highway.
Yeah.
All the stuff on the highway.
This one. Yeah.
I'm not counting all of that along the highway. I'm going to count right behind it.
Here. Okay. Excuse me. So I mean, all of that is not going to come over here. They're not going to pass these.
I would, I would say that the commercial building will use it, which is part of development. And part of the reason the open space exists as well as for.
Talk to me about what kind of commercial, like what commercial building is going to use that? Cause I mean, I go to Walmart, but I'm not playing on their grass in front.
Over by Joanne and some things like that. They have pickleball court, not pickleball courts, picnic tables sitting in between them and the townhomes as well. Um, there are actually some commercial entities that, um, their employees for lunch will go outside and eat at the picnic tables.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm asking is like this, where it's a lot of green together and that's what I like. That's what I think kids need. Can it be on at least the can it be the buffer between the residential and the commercial? Can it be here? And then at least it feels like they haven't had to go through the McDonald's. And it's not on the highway.
Right. It's right there.
The, the only question I have is this commercial, it can't, it's more likely to change down the road based off.
Actually wants to go.
Actually, he's going to go in. This is the only part that's going to be more of a blank canvas.
Then can, then give us the grassy area on that border.
Now we can mess around with it. Um,
I mean, I don't know if it affects your buildings and parking, but like if it ends up like this, I'm, I'm going to say we messed up like.
Thing about commercials is based on who buys that. It as well. At one point it's going to be a grocery store. Uh, and that's how much this could change. Is that.
Yeah.
So to say to the, hey, you know, this, I think we're, we're looking at the wrong aspects of this project to say that, hey, you want the grass area back behind? That could be just one large building smacked out in the middle. By the time someone comes to say, hey, I'd like to purchase this, it could be a small grocery store. I just don't think it's worth it. It's a part of it.
Yeah.
Well, then I don't, then I don't feel like that's enough play area for two hundred townhomes.
But yeah. There, there is going to be that common area for the commercial. All I'm saying is that if we did need that, there are pieces in the back to be a play area that you're needing or, or talking about, I don't think it's going to be that, that could be a point of discussion.
Throw something in on that.
Yeah.
Back in there.
That, that drummage is going to be the piece to be manipulated most uh, throughout the whole project, I feel like.
Yeah. So it all in, in the end depends on basically who ends up going in there.
I, I understand that, but part of it is we're, we're trying to say, hey, go forward with this because you've got enough open space. And you're saying, well, that's a really blank canvas. So can't really count that or can we, you know, can we cannot count, we cannot count it. And I, and I don't agree that the little grass space in between them is trails because that doesn't go anywhere. It's just a walk. It's just a sidewalk area. So I don't think that's open space, common open space. It's something, not something anybody's going to play on. They're going to let their dogs do their business on and that's all. So.
I also swear with the people who live in City Hall. But we, we actually were the front part of our, our, our yard, more than any of the amenities of the project.
Right.
And we hung out there. I have my little boy, five year old boy. We played games in front. That's going to be utilized.
How big is each one of those little green squares? It looks like it's maybe like four by eight.
Between the you have twenty feet in between the two buildings.
So it's maybe like a.
Sidewalk. Yeah. You're looking about eight feet wide by however long those twenty four, eight by twenty four.
Is it like from me to you? I mean, this is my front door and that's your front door.
That's the end of the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's the next house is where he's standing at now.
Like, like, is this my front door and that's your front door? And this is the, and this is all grass in between?
No, there's a sidewalk.
Sidewalks and like sidewalks up to each house.
Checkerboard of sidewalks.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just don't think that is really common open space. I think that's general open space. But I don't, I don't, it's not like an amenity. It's not like something that people are going to play frisbee on, like you were saying, or whatever you want to call it. So I, I don't think that meets the intent of the, of the common open space.
Some discussions that people that actually live there, I, I have these.
Okay.
I think that's been part of the discussion is I, I know you guys see that is, as you go up on that tight, like the top right hand corner, you see all this mumbo jumbo right here. But as you look at the top right hand corner of this plan, it shows more vividly all the green space and the open space. And that allows you to see what, what more could be used there as that green open space common area useful space. And to me, like I said, once the buildings were in and that area is in place, is when you can see that vision. And like I said, I've lived in an area like this. And I use areas like that when I have little kids. I don't go play pickleball. There's just so many uses for each area of a building like this. And there's so many variations of people I've been calling like most better than Ross too. She still says that people visualize them at least differently throughout the project and the usage of it. Um, I, I was going to do, I can do a garbage pit.
Jake, get you talking to the microphone. Sorry.
But in my experience, I, I, people throw garbage in them and they become a garbage pit rather than, than a, a fire pit. There's certain places and amenities that I've used in the past that, that I know function. And, and that's where I say, I, I, with my experience and that I've built projects like this, we're building one in Ogden right now. We see those being used differently than we anticipated and we expected. And like I said, I've even lived in a project like this and the usage of it does function. Like I said, we, my wife was out there laying out with my little boy and playing all day long in that front little area. And she wishes that we had something like that now.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, I agree that that will get used, but I don't think, I think that is going to feel like my space, like my front yard. And so I'm going to use it to, if my neighbors are out in their front yard, I don't know that like she's going to come over from two buildings over. You know, and we're going to take up a few people's front yards. Maybe, maybe I do agree it's going to get used, but I guess I was hoping for that little space and at least one big space that you can kick a soccer ball into a goal or throw frisbee like some distance. And so if you can guarantee me one of those big chunks from the highway backs the residential area without having to go through commercial, I'll consider it.
And I think what I'm saying is I don't see that being a problem. I think that would be something we could focus on that as we put together the commercial space. And I also see that commercial space going fairly quick. And I think that could be the focus as we go through the city that we made that comment that, hey, this was a condition. The approval was that we needed this little space back.
Yeah.
I think that would be a problem.
That might make it.
Is there a way we can almost just, Marcus, will you go back up? To whoever's running it?
To the open space map?
Yeah, I just want to, is there a reason that we need to have all of the green open space? Cause that's a significant amount bordering the highway? Can we almost just flip it?
Though your main problem is the city code requires that the residential townhomes have to be two hundred and fifty feet away from the highway.
No, I understand that. I'm saying this green where we've got these buildings.
Well, it.
These ones. Why can't we just plot and just do a mirror image? So instead of bordering the highway, we've got this really nice green strip that almost goes.
Have a water line running right there.
But that would solve our issues.
Yeah, there is a water line running right through the middle right there.
Meaning no buildings right there. Is it a P U D?
Technically meets code, I believe. Cause I don't think I think there's a setback along Highway ninety one for you guys. But I think the bigger problem is you'll see that existing water line running right there. You see that one?
Marcus, can you, I can't see it. What?
That blue line?
This one? Are we talking about that one?
Oh, thank you. There's so many.
So because of that, I can't shimmy that building over. Otherwise I would definitely move it over. However, as Jake says. However, as Jake says, by all technicalities, if a bigger building comes in here, which I think would be the dream of everybody. Be a bigger building that takes up more of the commercial space than one, one big building. You're naturally gonna double the amount of open space that's over there, and I can shimmy things around a lot more. Um, the reason it's broken out like this is to try and help commercial buildings, if they are smaller. They can still visualize this area as more of a commercial park rather than one large building.
Grocery store or nothing, right?
Yeah.
So my issue with approving this or recommending approval is the what-if situation. Cause if we're saying, okay, we're okay with this, we recommend it, then this could be exactly what we get.
Yes.
And that's my issue, is that a big part of, sorry, I have a throat thing. A big part of the common open space is in this unknown. That's an issue, cause ultimately we're recommending for approval and we're recommending this plan for approval.
My answer to that is, even if we did say, no, put a grass section back there and leave the floor, we used to say that won't change too. So I guess what I'm saying is that we could recommend, we'd be specific, is if you guys wanna buffer between this open space and between the commercial and residential. I don't, and, and starting with Mark's, I don't, he probably can't hear it anyways.
I can hear you.
But, but I think, I don't know if you could make that recommendation, that that could be, or a condition, excuse me. That could be a, a condition, that as we go along the commercial, we're still blank canvas, like I said, I don't know what's gonna be there. I would hope a, a big grocery store, but as we go along, I think that could be a focus that we could make a condition upon this that.
Yeah, I mean, it, it really goes back to what you're willing to agree to in order to get this through. Um, if the commission says that this doesn't meet the requirements and it's not gonna go through and they're gonna hold it up, great. That's allowed, but if you're willing to agree to some sort of concession like that, say, yeah, we agree that we'll modify it this way. And we have that on the public record, then, I mean, you'll be bound to it. But if you're okay with being bound to it, then the planning commission can move you on if they're okay with it too.
I, I just think we're meets code, there's just areas that we, I mean, we're not far off on what we're trying to do here. And the usable space would be a benefit to the residential and the commercial, I would think, and a buffer. And that's why I say I'm not against that. Now, if you were to say, hey, we just want two large buildings there for a commercial, I think that would be saying, hey, I don't wanna be limited to what I put there as far as commercial. It's just such a, I wanna still leave that a blank canvas, and I'm hoping to have just one large building and have open all that up the common area. But I think, I think, uh, what does make sense to me is a condition, we put some common area in between as a buffer. I don't think that would be a, a problem in my eyes. I don't think that's anything that it's hurting the project.
I don't, I don't, I don't know if it would matter where it is, you know, on here, like pickleball's up in that corner. But to have, and I get that you can't change this, I understand setbacks and things, but this chunk, that's no storage. But start, that would be a great play space. That chunk and this chunk, if, if I knew, you know, that it had some sort of a, and I don't know if we have to say like, it needs to be at least fifty yards or, you know what I mean? So that it's not skinny thing just off of here, you know, that feels so deep into the commercial. I don't, I don't know how to specify it.
That's right, that's right on the weekend.
I know, but you understand what we're saying, like, it's.
Well, well, I mean, it's, it seems to me that because the commercial is so unknown, it would be better for you and for everybody. If the plan was independent of what commercial ended up being. So if you rearranged so that your open space was in the border zone or whatever you wanna call it, or maybe just moved all the way over to the residential, however you wanna do it. Then, then we can say, okay, that's fixed, and now with the whole plan works. But by having it this vague, it might be this, it might be that, we can't really count the, count that almost because it's so uncertain. So it makes more sense to me to have you move it over so we can say, this is what we're gonna do, and this is what we're approving. Because, I mean, it's too vague.
Well, and there's also a red line, isn't there, about the clubhouse that to count it, it needs to be open to the public?
To be counted as commercial space, so they're counting it as common open space, which of course it is, cause it's a recreation area.
Sure.
And they're also counting this commercial, which we've allowed in the past, but there's a condition that it has to be open for anyone. Not like as a public rec center, but the HOA has to allow other people to come and rent it or use it as an event space or something.
So someone could come in and buy like a pool pass? Is that what you mean?
More like rent it out as like a birthday.
They, they can.
Yeah.
A space for, for parties.
I that don't live in this development could rent that out for my kid's birthday party?
Yeah, like, they do that down at the Four Seasons in North Logan. You can rent out that space for weddings and family parties and.
If my friend did a wedding at a clubhouse in someone's.
Oh, I bet that would go really well.
Yeah, so we've, we allow. Camera which, from the developments that have come through, we've allowed them to count that if they have it as a rental that's open to the general public.
Okay, is there a pavilion of some kind by the pool?
Uh, not at this time, unless something's, I mean, the clubhouse itself would have kind of a, a room in, in.
And maybe a patio, yeah, yeah, hmm, I didn't know that. I like that. I like that too. Good.
The, the pool and clubhouse itself is a huge expenditure.
I know.
When you go to this size, a, a lot of these people live here expect that. And that's why it's hard to slap that when you say, hey, I want a place to play first. If, if we left that just grass area.
Right, yeah, we qualify, I know.
Be happy, but.
Is there grass next to the pool or probably not?
There is grass, we found lots of patches around there, but this pool and clubhouse gets used so much. Uh, to take it away, I, I fear that saying, hey, let's just take a pool away and not even have it all together.
No, I.
If you're filled.
I know, those are expensive. I appreciate that.
For this size, I think people like that expect it, and that's why I'm saying the give and take for something like this to have your big grassy area.
Yeah.
I'm trying to fill with areas that I know will be used and utilized for the size of the project, and they're not cheap. Just a grassy area, I'd love to do that.
I know.
So, I, I, I know, I think that's what I'm saying, we could work together. I'm trying to create a project that I know is gonna function well and it's gonna be used. Um, but at the same time, that's what I'm saying, I'm hoping we can work together to make sure that this project works.
All right, so, so the pool comes with phase two, is that correct?
Yes.
When does, when does pickleball and that play area come?
That'd be part of phase.
Three, your black line doesn't show that, so can we get that in the notes or?
Just adjust the phase line. Cause right now, it's, I think it's got cut off by the green overlay you put on there.
It just goes up to the bottom of it and it doesn't, the phase line doesn't seem to go right or left, so.
Is that heavy black line, the phase line?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'm thinking it's like a.
Isn't it a big excuse? Don't you have to do commercial, it's?
Yeah, and that's one thing that we mentioned in the beginning, all of these units on Wolfpack Way have a commercial condo in the bottom. And there's a residential unit on top, so in every phase, they are including a chunk of those, so they are having commercial in every phase.
And then you sent over some designs. Do you have which one you're gonna go with?
Uh, yes, we, we had low costed, like, so, feels like seven months.
I mean, there's.
February.
I feel like there's.
Yeah.
We sent some elevations over.
Oh, no, I, I have them. I'm just wondering, there's option A, option B.
They'll, they'll alternate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're, they're required to do a mix.
Oh, perfect, that's what I was just gonna say, are we mixing these up? We're staggering up.
They're not gonna be a great shot up.
No, we didn't.
Ordinance doesn't allow cookie butter.
Can I ask about the snow storage? I've just been too many places, whether it's a grocery store or apartments. Where when we have a heavy snow year, it's not every year, but we get a heavy snow year and they pile it up and all of a sudden we're missing five parking spaces. Which are sometimes critical, maybe not always, but often in these kind of places. We know that's, that will not happen?
Yes, we have, so this was done before the city's new snow calculation was concocted. Um, and so what we utilized was, uh, yeah, Rexburg Idaho's snow calculation. Um, and theirs is essentially ten percent of your paved areas you need in snow storage. To meet your snow storage requirements, so we just made sure that we have, I think I ended up having like fourteen points on percent.
All right, so you're building that, are you Jake? Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, um, you're building this and then selling it to someone to ma- to sell and manage? I mean, these are individually sold, right? And then an HOA?
Yes.
So an HOA is the one that's gonna manage that snowplow truck?
Yeah.
And a driver and saying, you can't compromise any parking spaces for snowpiling.
They do, and then in fact, if you don't, parking is golden for.
Right.
Like this.
I know.
Typically, every, every new moon, I mean, it, once in a while you'll have a crazy storm.
Yeah.
And we do have to get a, a loader with a tr- a truck, and we have to load it away. And I know that's a, a big deal for the city for snow storage, but based off of the old code and Rexburg and all the projects that I've done. It's typical, I mean, you have crazy snowstorms, but for the most part, it is managed fairly well, so.
Yeah, I would just hope for that. And then water dedication, um, you have that taken care of?
Yeah, for each phase, the water dedication, phase one, assuming the flat either talked about it. It's essentially point four or five acre feet per unit. Yeah, point four or five acre feet per unit, and then one point eight seven acre feet for every acre of irrigatable land.
But if you're using secondary water for outdoor, you don't have to.
You found secondary water?
Yes, and so that would be mitigated because we have secondary shares and second.
And then you have, you've like signed over to the city, the whatever rights or shares you need for the indoor water.
That will go, I'm assuming, have you done this part phase one so far? It'll go phase by phase, that's normally when it's done, and Marcus knows when that will happen.
Like city staff checks that off or city council?
Yeah.
Or what point is that checked?
There's something that the city council is being pretty particular about this. Um, in the code, and this has been in the code all along, we've just been kind of not really enforcing it as diff. What we've done in the past is we've said, you can bring us the water rights before your building permits are issued. That's how we've done it in the past. The way that the code is written is technically the city shouldn't even be approving final plans until those shares are dedicated to the city. Or the fee is paid, and so the city council with its most recent development that came through, they put a condition on approval. Saying that that couldn't actually be done until a developer brought the water shares. And so I would expect the same condition would be put on any other future developments.
That's all my questions.
And Mike, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I got, um, you've, you've answered a few or you've gone over a few. Um, the commercial that is on the east side bordering with Wolfpack Way. Um, what are the, where's the front? Where's the entrance to those commercials? Is it on Wolf, Wolfpack Way?
Yes, there's also a door in the back. There's a door in the back to get in if you. There's a door on the front.
Cause there's no parking in the front, and there's no on-street parking allowed on Wolfpack Way. So you've put it right up against the road and there's no place other than behind the building. So, I mean, I guess if they, the business opens their back door to customers. When the signage is all on the front.
It's actually the vision of what was shown in the plan, they do not want park. In the old code, um, of this got updated in the new code. But in the old code, the city explicitly stated that parking could not be in front of the buildings. All parking had to come either from the side or the back of the buildings. Um, we, for this purpose, the front will have storefronts, and you'll have storefronts. And so people walking along sidewalk could just walk right into the store, and that's where your storefront's gonna be. And then on the back end, there will be a door to enter, kinda like down in Logan, where you have the book table and everyone, you know, everyone parks in the back. And yet you go to this one little door to get in.
Backside of this.
That's essentially what you have right there. So all the parking will be in the back, which as I, as I said, the code explicitly stated that this is how it had to be done.
Yeah, I'm, sorry, I guess I'm just getting up to speed on that. I didn't realize we were asked saying, let's have live work units on Wolfpack Way, but no parking on Wolfpack Way. That seems odd for us to require that, but that's a side note. Go ahead.
I'm not sure if I have any other questions at this time, I'm just, I'm not, uh, I mean, to be, to be honest, this is the, the. Plan or a plan just like it is the reason why we changed our code, because, uh, there is, there's not enough open space. And if, if we're counting those little tiny lawns as open space, um, we made the right move to change that.
Any other questions for the developer? Thanks, guys. You guys can sit down, I guess. We'll have a little internal dis- or discussion.
Do, is this a recommendo?
This would be a recommend.
So this is a, a recommendation to the city council, um, but, yeah, recommend.
Okay, so, I, I mean, I'm, my feelings are that those little grass areas don't count for common, they count for general open space. Obviously, the pool and the bigger areas should count for common open space. But I don't think that you're gonna make it to ten percent with, uh, just the pool and the two other little places.
I agree.
And they, they do have these other amenity areas.
Yeah, the half ones, yeah, the barbecue areas, that, that, to me, that counts as common open space.
But yeah, that.
The little gla- gla- grass areas, I think, is general open space. That's my, that's my field, doesn't, I mean, when you look at this in this view, it doesn't look like very much open space anywhere.
Well, and Michael's right, this is why we changed.
Right.
Because it, it doesn't work. We smooshed, how many are there? Two hundred and thirty units?
Something there.
Two hundred and fifty-one.
Two hundred and fifty-one units into this tiny, tiny thing, and, and I agree, I don't think that those counted.
The previous presented to the commission had about two hundred and ten, two hundred and fifteen townhomes. So when they added on, originally, it was cut off about a third of the way in. And I can probably find that site plan, so when they added on the commercial area, there was also an addition of thirty or forty more townhomes overall.
Cause I wanna say that they went to city council and they approved, cause this wasn't here. The whole chunk wasn't here when we saw it.
So when they brought this to the city council, the city council approved it, but they put a condition on that approval that the, the city staff could reopen. This for a full review, and we wouldn't go back and say, oh, that was already decided on preliminary. So we've worked through that with the developer, but as I said in the beginning, that's been the question with the open space and how it's counted. Because the city staff agrees that we don't feel like this counts as common open space. Definitely agree, all these amenity areas count, um, you know, general open, there's a lot of general open space. I think general open space wise, they're fine, especially counting the retention pond and everything else that can count as general open space. But the DRC expressed concern multiple times, we didn't feel like there was enough amenity space to be half. That's up to you to decide.
Um, sure, what's your comment?
Um, just for your guys' knowledge, um, I know this is, I know which one you guys are talking about, why you changed the code. Um, and that one, all those spaces were counted under the exact same code that we are currently under. So I just wanted to put that little plug in there, that they were counted on that one. And therefore, since the code hadn't changed between that one and this one, I completely, under the new code, it would not be counted. And so from here on out, everything will work out exactly as you guys are planning it. But under this one, this does fit under that old code, which was counted under that other project.
I think one you're talking about, the Bringhurst Village, they had little amenity spots like this, they had a lot more of them.
Right, cause this is go through the city, and the city staff and the DRC has stated that it does not meet their intention of the code.
Yeah, we had the same discussion with the Bringhurst Village guys, so you can count your amenity spaces you created between all the units. But the city staff didn't want them counting the other kind of appendage green spaces off of those.
So if city staff hasn't said that it's counted and we don't feel like it's counted.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Go for it.
I, I make a motion, I make a motion that we do not recommend this move forward to this, or that the city council does not approve this one.
Based on?
Based on not enough common open space.
So just to be clear, you're recommending, you're not recommending that it be tabled for another meeting, you're recommending that it move forward, but with a negative recommendation.
Why not table it? I mean, if they wanna come back to us and show us more open space and flip the common to, to show us how that could look, even though it is a, a blank canvas. If they could at least show it to us, we could table this and they could come back and. We could table this and they could come back and then that way we're not wasting city council time that they have to deny it and then it comes back to us. It feels like it, it's a more streamlined to just table it.
Um.
I think that's delayed for the developer.
But we try to, I tried, we try to avoid.
I mean, cause if we're, we're moving you on, on a disapproval, then you have to fix it. It has come all the way back to us and then we approve it and it keeps going. If we just table it for two weeks, you can bring back a new plan that works, it shows us this, it shows more open space. Or common open space. Did I say that right?
I, I, I mean, I, I think, I understand your thought process, but I think we're trying to not table things.
Well, I'm asked.
Really, no, I'm just saying, our, our kind of.
Do we try?
I think where you guys are not the ultimate land use authority, where you're just recommending body. I wouldn't advise you to hold it up here. I'd let you, I think Ned's motion to have it move on and let the city council decide. Is probably a good way to go.
And then it would just come back to us if they.
And then if, well, the city council, if the city council agrees with your recommendation and they want to see that open space altered, where they're the ultimate approval. They could put it back to the developer and say, we're not gonna approve you until you fix this problem. Um. They don't necessarily have to send it back to you.
Okay.
They could motion to have it sent all the way back, but typically with the city council, they'll be like, yeah, once you fix these things. Either it's a conditional approval or they'll table it.
Okay, cause I'm just thinking if we had to do like eight steps, that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, no, and that's why typically for the mixed use projects where you're not the ultimate land use authority.
Great.
We have you just recommend it and move on. If, if this was, and this is kind of a difficult thing where the developer is saying. Yes, we think it meets and the city's saying, no, we don't think it does. It, it ultimately depends on the land use authority, the city council to make that decision. Um. So I think holding them up here would be unnecessary.
And sometimes applicants will change what they present to us and what they present to city council. So they can decide to take their chances with what, you know, the same argument they've put to us, they can put to city council. Or they can redraw it and put it to city council, right? They can do either way.
Yeah, um. You know, if, if there's a major change, then typically we want that to start over. In this case with this development that didn't happen. Um, for a bunch of different reasons I won't get into now. But, yeah, I mean, if they're just gonna go in and modify the open space, that wouldn't be something that they would have to start over.
Right, right.
Sorry, Ned, I didn't mean to cut you off.
So the motion is that we move this forward to the city council with a non-recommendation. Because of the lack of.
Recommend, not approval.
No approval, yeah.
Okay.
No approval, recommend no approval based on lack of common open space. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
I don't, Mike's gonna say.
Okay, I'll, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to not approve or recommend not approval of this. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, okay. I think, thank you. Uh, I think that's all that's on the agenda. Or is, oh, there's.
So we had a, there's a discussion item next, but that particular item. Is to discuss a draft and an ordinance that I have not finished yet. And so I don't have language for you to review tonight.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I've been busy trying to hire our city planner.
You got one, right?
We did get one. We're just trying to figure out the details of when she's gonna start.
Okay.
Did she work? Never.
Yeah, we can talk about it.
All right, so.
So if you wanna just talk general transition zone, we can. I just don't have any language for.
I think we let you take those notes from before and then. Compile them and put them together and then we can have something to look at.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you're gonna have probably two different comments, one from before and one from now, and then you won't know about it.
And I like the comments we have before. I just haven't.
Right.
Put them in writing.
All right. So.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
You just motioned to adjourn.
All right, the livestream is still on. Uh. Michael, thanks for joining us via Zoom. I'm gonna end the Zoom and end the livestream.
Okay, bye, guys.